All right. Well, good evening. It is July 28th and just after 5 o'clock. We are moving forward with our virtual town hall tonight, just to kind of share information across Granberry ISD. We've had a lot of questions come in and we know a lot of you have questions as it relates to reopening schools in the next couple of weeks. And we're going to do our best to clarify a lot of that information tonight. This is a Zoom call and we only have room for about 1,000 people. So if we end up hitting over 1,000, please know that this entire debriefing will be recorded and certainly anybody can go back and watch at a later date. I do want to thank everybody on the call, those of you who submitted questions. We really appreciate that, had a very healthy response of questions. Appreciate all of our administrators that are on the call this evening, all of our support staff, our school board members that have taken time out of their busy schedule to be on the call. Certainly also want to give thanks to our city council, all of our county leaders for the help they've shown us. Dr. Blocker, who is our county health authority and Captain Jay Webster, the emergency management coordinator. He has been tremendous in working with the district as we begin planning for the reopening of schools. Also need to thank Lake Granberry Medical Center. They've been just an outstanding partner in providing just sound medical advice through this entire pandemic. So with that, let me say that when school left for spring break in March, I don't think that any of us thought we would be sitting here toward the end of July. It has, it has certainly been an eventful few months and we know that people have a lot of questions. People have a lot of anxiety. As the pandemic hit, the U.S. and as the pandemic hit Texas, our healthcare workers went to the front lines and they've been on the front lines throughout this process. Certainly our thoughts and prayers and gratitude goes out to them. After that, we saw our grocery stores begin to reopen. We saw our retail stores reopen and we saw food service begin to reopen after the lockdown. And here we sit now a couple of weeks away and it's, it's now time for schools across the country to face reopening. And so educators are being called to the front lines across this country. Here's what I can say, I know that, I know there's a lot of anxiety on both sides. There's a lot of people that do not want to see schools reopen. And there's a lot of people that think schools should reopen immediately without any precautions whatsoever. I've given it a lot of thought, I've talked to a lot of people and one of the reasons that I've shared with others is that the reason I think anxieties are so high is because what we have is a public health crisis versus a public health crisis. And so if you turn on the news, you're going to see that America faces a public health crisis in COVID-19. You see the stats on the news every night, you can go on the internet and read article after article after article of what's going on with COVID and how it's affecting not only Hood County, but our state and our country. And it's very real. It's a contagious virus and we know that it, it, it has a grim reality for a lot of people. We have teachers that are so concerned about it, they've submitted their resignation to the district and decided that they're not going to come back and teach kids because they don't want to teach in, in an environment where we have such a highly contagious virus. So we take that seriously. We, we don't minimize, we don't minimize some of the anxiety that individuals have due to COVID-19. But we face another public health crisis on the opposite side of the fence. We know that when schools don't open, we have kids that possibly face abuse, that face malnutrition, that academically suffer greatly. We know that public schools, at, at our very core, we meet the academic, social, emotional, and physical needs of a lot of kids. And that's not just here in Granberry ISD, that's across the state of Texas. And so it's important that public schools reopen. We know that the best education possible for kids is an in-person education. We are at our best as educators when we have kids in front of us in the classroom. So we really want to move forward with reopening on August 12th. But understand this to the parents out there, it is, it is a partnership and ultimately the power is yours because we are going to offer both in-person instruction and virtual instruction. If you have anxiety about coming back into the schoolhouse, know this, that we are going to have a robust curriculum in place virtually for you and your family. No one is forcing you to come back into the ISD, into our buildings. For those of you that want to come back in, know that we're going to take precautions. Again, we've got to look out for all the kids coming into our buildings. I know there's a lot of parents out there that are concerned that maybe we shouldn't be wearing masks, maybe we shouldn't worry about social distancing. Understand, a lot of that is not necessarily a Granberry ISD decision. A lot of these mandates actually come from the state of Texas and we're just following the guidance of the Texas Education Agency. And ultimately, we want to reopen and bring kids back into our facilities, but we have to do it safely. And this is a fluid situation. If this begins to depreciate and go away, then certainly a lot of those precautions we'll be able to back off of. And if it gets worse, certainly we'll have to adjust on the fly for that as well. So with that, let me go over the agenda for tonight. I'm going to go over the status of the facts and tell you where we're at in Texas and in Hood County and within the ISD. I'm going to talk about some parental resources out there, community resources, where we get our information and where you can get more information if you want to dig a little deeper on some of the policies we're going to discuss tonight. We'll go into a Q and A. Again, these are the questions that we received from parents and community members and we have our leadership team to help us answer questions about the protocols for reopening, in-person and virtual instruction, special education, child nutrition, transportation, and then just some general questions. And we'll go through all of those. And again, well over 100 questions. We actually had so many that we had to kind of consolidate them down into topics. So thank you again to everybody who submitted a question. And then after that, we will, we will look to kind of wrap up this evening and we'll talk about, a little more about the reopening process. So with that, I'm going to give you a couple of websites before we get going. If for some reason you have a question that doesn't get answered tonight, or if you have some of our answers spark additional questions, you can always email us at coronavirus@granberryisd.org. If you'll send an email to that email address or account, we will respond and get back with you as soon as possible. And if you have any technology issues or questions, you can always email our technology department at helpdesk@granberryisd.org. So with that, I want to jump into the status of the facts, kind of where we find ourselves right now across the state of Texas. As of today, there are about 385 positive, 1,000 positive cases of COVID-19. However, active cases of COVID-19 in the state of Texas are just over 146,000. I talk about active cases because when I have the opportunity to visit with Dr. Blocker, our lead health authority in Hood County, those are the numbers we really look at. So in Hood County, there have been 341 confirmed cases of COVID-19. However, currently there are only about 150 active cases. Now that's based on data from July 23rd. I have not seen any additional updates from Dr. Blocker since July 23rd. As we look at the ISD, I want to share with you the fact that we are currently working to test all of our district employees. To date, as of today, we have tested 1,068 individuals. We have had 10 positive tests and 10 invalid tests and 1,088 negative tests. So if you look at the numbers tested here, we're running just under 1%, which is pretty consistent with what you see in Hood County, which is pretty consistent with what you see at the state level. State level may be just over 1%. So looking at where we stand as a county, where we stand as an ISD, we feel confident that the numbers are not so high that we can't open with in-person instruction with precautions. So with that, I want to jump into a few resources that you might hear mentioned tonight and I'm going to share those quickly and then we will jump into the question and answer portion of the town hall. So as I jump to my share screen, if I do this correctly, the first document I want to share with you is on the TEA website. So a lot of our guidance comes from the Texas Education Agency. It is a huge resource for all school districts in the state of Texas. You will find that a lot of the procedures and protocols that Granberry ISD puts out are also put out by every other district in the state. And that's because we use guidance from the Texas Education Agency. So on this first website, it's tea.texas.gov/coronavirus. And if you scroll down, the Texas Education Agency has divided their guidance into about 12 different, different cards. Everything from public health orders to academics, to special ed, special pops, and child nutrition. I want to take a second just to talk about public health orders because I think this concerns a lot of people on the call today. As you hit the public health orders card and you scroll down, I'm going to click on this first tab, which is public health guidance. And so as you click public health guidance, here are the requirements and the planning guidance the TEA gives every district in the state. And so as you scroll down through, you can see on page four of this guidance, how school districts are supposed to deal with suspected COVID-19 cases. This comes up and it'll come up in our Q and A tonight with why we're asking individuals to wear masks. And again, that's the governor's order for ages 10 and over. However, if we're talking about kids that are younger than age 10, a lot of our recommendations and encouragement is based on what TEA is telling us to do. Also updated just today is the symptoms list and it was from the CDC website. And if you'll notice, the, the COVID-19 symptoms list was actually consolidated. So the roster of symptoms that we're going to be looking for as a school district is actually significantly smaller than it was just a day ago. And you see those there in the middle of the page. And then close contact. So what happens when a child comes to school and they get exposed to someone who maybe has symptoms? And again, though that information is provided to us directly from TEA and that's being directly exposed to the infectious secretions like being coughed on or being within six feet for a duration of 15 minutes. So we know as we put kids in the classroom, those two things are going to come up. And I'm going to jump to one other piece of guidance here that was updated. It's the 2021 Public Health Operational Guidebook. And a lot of our administrators are seeing this for the first time because this just came out a couple of hours ago. But I'm going to scroll down and feel free to, to read this on your own. There's a couple of things at play here. One is self-isolation. So TEA is recommending that individuals who exhibit the symptoms of COVID-19, if they don't receive a test, that they have to quarantine themselves. So they have to self-isolate. In addition to that, they have the stay-at-home order. So the stay-at-home order applies to individuals who possibly were in close contact with somebody that was positive for COVID-19. And so I bring this up because this is a unique challenge of all school districts in the state. Not only are we dealing with individuals who exhibit symptoms, we also have to deal with the fact that if you have symptoms of COVID-19 and you're in close contact with another child or staff member that have COVID-19, the state is asking us to send individuals home that have close contact for 14 days. That is a significant challenge for the ISD as we look to reopen. I'm going to back out of, of this page real quick. Before I leave, I do want to remind everybody the child nutrition health benefits. So our PEB benefit, which is the $285 benefit to economically disadvantaged families, that was extended today, that application period, August 21st. If you or somebody you know qualifies, you can go to this P EBT August Extension one pager and it'll give you the information to sign up for that $285 benefit. And again, we want to make sure our kids don't go hungry during this time. So we're grateful for the state for passing that. And then the final piece I want to show you, parents that are planning to do virtual learning, the instructional continuity and planning card, if you'll click on that and you'll scroll down to Texas Home Learning, and then from Texas Home Learning, you can go to the visit to the Texas Home Learning website. And when you arrive, you can see I'm a parent, I'm a teacher, I'm a district employee, and then the information is in Spanish as well. If you're looking for resources as you work with your child, not only will the district put out resources, but know that these resources are available to you as well. So as I back out of that, know that Granberry ISD is also putting a ton of information on our district website. So if you'll go to granberryisd.org, as soon as you load the page, you'll see our roadmap to reopening. As you click on reopening procedures, you'll see all of our protocols, all of our guidelines as we reopen. This changes every day and we're grateful to Jeff Metter for continuing to update it. And you can scroll down and get just about anything you could possibly want as it relates to reopening guidance. From there, you can always check out our social media accounts on Facebook and Twitter. We'll put the latest information on there every day. And then we're trying to clarify some of the really specific details as it relates to reopening. We know there are a lot of questions about face masks. And so just yesterday, we put out more information that really clarifies our policy as it relates to face coverings at all grade levels. Finally, for those of you interested in UIL guidance, you want to know what's going to happen with the upcoming sports season, I would encourage you to go to uilTexas.org and click on COVID-19 update and you'll see the same information that our coaches and athletic director use to make decisions for athletics. And then the final piece of information or resource I want to give you is the Texas DSHS website. And so the Department of State Health Services website, it provides updates on every county in the state as well as up-to-date reporting across the state of Texas. So those are the resources I think will be most beneficial to our parents and community members. And please know, those are the same resources that all of our leaders use on a daily basis. So with that, I want to go ahead and jump into the Q and A portion of our program tonight. So one of the questions that we saw come up over and over and over was, is it, is it safe, is it safe to return to in-person instruction? And specifically, did the district explore the opportunity of just going virtual until late September like some other districts are doing? To answer those two questions, I've asked our school board president, Mark Jackson, to join us on the call. And so, Mark, what do you think?
Thanks, Dr. Glenn. On behalf of the board, I just want to say hello to everybody. We really appreciate the community. We couldn't have moved forward and gathered data and information without your input. So we appreciate your participation in this call tonight. I'll tackle that second question first. Yeah, of course, we, we considered all options, including that of just starting with the virtual training or virtual teaching avenue. And as you know, we did put the survey out and asked the community, primarily parents and staff, what they wanted to do. And right at about 60% responded by saying they wanted their kids back in the classroom. So that was important. And the balance of those were split basically between what virtual instruction, or they just weren't sure yet, they were still gathering information. Is it, is it safe to return in-person instruction? Yes, obviously, we think it is to the best of our abilities, or else we would not be offering it. You know, we have again gathered and implemented all the possible measures as recommended by the CDC, by national and state health officials, and of course, in close contact with our county and local health officials and emergency coordinator. So we really feel like we have put together a grouping of protocols and practices that you'll hear more about that are common sense, that hopefully aren't too overbearing and won't interfere with the educational process. So we're, we feel very confident about that. Is it fail-safe? No, folks, we know we're going to see a COVID case pop up here and there. But, but you know, I kind of look at it this way, no matter where you are on this spectrum, whether you believe COVID-19 is a very serious health issue and all the precautions need to be taken and you need to be, have your student in virtual instruction, or if you're on the other side of the spectrum that believes it's essentially another strain of flu, that it's much ado about nothing, it really doesn't matter. We're not sitting here in judgment of where you are in your belief system on COVID-19. But I would suggest this, no matter where you're at on that spectrum, you all go to the grocery store. We all have to eat. So we've all been at HEB and Kroger and Brookshires. We all have to stop and gas up our cars and we all, most of us have a workplace that we go to and, and those workplaces have certain procedures and protocols in place. So the point is this, if I were to have a choice of where to put my child, I'd want him in one of our public schools just because I know how stringent our protocols and practices are going to be. And I'll just end with this and answer this question. I've got a wife who teaches in the district. I have a son who's going to be a sophomore at the high school. We sat down as a family, as you all should, after much prayer and meditation and really talked it through and decided as a family what we wanted to do. And in my case, both my wife and my son wanted to be back in the classroom. But we're not going to force anyone back in. Virtual training will, will be there as an option.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. The next question is for our assistant superintendent, Ron Holmgren, who helped put together our district protocols. And it's a two-part question, so I'll start with the first part. Temperature checks, what's going to be the district practice as it relates to, to how we're going to check temperatures for students and staff? And in the second part is masks. So masks, face shields, coverings, what, what would be required of students and staff? How will it affect breaks, lunch periods, PE, recess, athletics, fine arts? Can we get exemptions for masks? You know, who's going to provide the mask in the PPE? So just threw a lot of questions at you. So tell us what you think.
Hey, fantastic. Thank y'all for joining us. First one with temperature checks. Per the TEA guidance and the public health planning guidance that Dr. Glenn shared with you, and it actually was updated this afternoon. But we implemented it in our protocols. There are a few minor changes to it, but as far as temperature checks, we will require for all staff, temperature checks prior to coming into our buildings. It's all teachers and staff, or it's a self-screen for COVID-19 symptoms as, as mentioned in the public health guidance, and then we will also check their temperature. Students, parents, you need to check the COVID-19 symptoms every day is what TEA requests, but we are not going to be checking temperatures on the daily basis for our students if they're asymptomatic. If a student does become ill in class, then we will, we'll follow those protocols. But for a child to enter the building or enter the bus, then we will not be checking their, their temperature. As far as masks go, the governor has required everybody aged 10 and up to wear a mask. So what we did is we looked at what many other districts were doing across the metroplex and across the state as well to kind of follow, listen, make sure that we're all somewhat on the same page, and that's what can be. And so what we decided is that we're going to require grade fourth through 12 to wear a mask all day when they're inside the building. And for our grades of PK to three, they need to wear a mask inside the building and then transitions in the hallways, we're requesting that. However, once they're in the classroom, they can remove their mask if they feel free and if their parents would like for them to. But we're going to try to follow the, the state guidelines as best we can. And we're going to be asking everybody who enters the building to be wearing a mask as well. The next question was, who's providing the mask? The Texas Education Agency did provide us with masks and face shields. And so we have enough to supply. However, it's not an ever-ending supply. And so we are requesting that if you have a mask, if you have a face shield that, that you like wearing, that you prefer to wear, we ask that you bring that. We will provide some, but it is not an endless supply. And so sometime we will end up running out of them. So please, if you have something, we ask that you bring that as well.
Yeah, thanks, Ron.
You threw a whole bunch out there.
Yeah, I was gonna...
Exemptions. Yeah, if, I'm sorry, if, if you don't, if you believe that you should not be wearing a mask, per the TEA guidance, we ask that you get a physician's note and provide that to your campus principal, or whether you're a student or a staff. And we will review that and take care of that appropriately on a case-to-case basis.
Thank you, Mr. Holmgren. And again, common sense is going to apply in all this. So if we have athletes outside running wind sprints, they're not going to be wearing masks. We're talking about inside the building. Obviously, when kids are eating lunch, they're, they're not going to have to try and stuff food in between the mask and their mouth. So common sense will apply. And keep in mind, this is a fluid situation. We're constantly monitoring it. As we get kids in the building, we know that there are going to be issues. One of the reason we, one of the reasons we have left flexibility in our policy for pre-K through three is because we know that there are going to be some challenges as it relates to keeping masks on those kids. But, but again, our, our intention is to make sure that our staff and our kids are kept as safe as possible. So with that, Julie Row leader is the principal at Bacchus Elementary. Julie, would you mind kind of, so this whole mask thing, a lot of the questions relate to what that could possibly look like with kids on campus. Would you mind sharing what, what a typical day may look like at Bacchus under this new policy?
Absolutely. Thank you guys for joining us tonight. We are extremely excited to see our students and families on August 12th. Our staff's ready to get into routine and provide those engaging experiences for our students. We plan to create a culture of awareness for practicing the social distancing and good hand washing. So as you walk through the building, you're going to see hand sanitizing stations to help make washing our hands or taking care of keeping our hands clean a little more convenient, as well as signs posted to remind us of those best practices. Our daily routine will include systems that will educate our students when to wash their hands and how to keep our areas clean. Some of the routines may look a little different, but we are planning to run as normal a school day as possible.
Yeah, thank you, Julie. And specifically, when we talk about those littles and the reason for the mask at the elementary level, looking at what the close contact guidance is from the Texas Education Agency, if, if a student is exposed or test positive for COVID-19, we want to make sure that we're not having to send an entire class home, all of our teachers home because they, they were exposed. So that's one of the reasons for the masks as well. So let's, let's jump to another question as it relates to our policy. And I know we had several parents concerned about this, and that's visitors and parents on campus. And I'll, I'm going to jump to the principal at Emma Roberson, Kelly Lambert, to help us with this question.
Okay, thanks. One thing is at our campuses, like most of the elementaries, our parents were limited coming in our buildings anyway because we always try to limit those interruptions to instruction. And so the parents mainly come in at lunch or for special activities and just out of concern and following the cafeteria guidelines and everything, that is the main issue that I've had questions with from parents. But parents, you know, if they want to come and take their kid to lunch, they're welcome to come and pick up their student and take them to lunch and bring them back. But we have always protected our kids. And if we do anything, our teachers have already been coming up with great ideas like having some virtual lunch meals with their parents. Like right now, we could sit here and you could have lunch with me and I could have lunch with you, but we're not together. And we're also going to investigate some outside things, ways to have some special activities outside where we can have them by class, spread out. We have huge fields that we can get out in, you know, weather permitting, and do some activities outside that will include the parents. But we will investigate this as it goes and do what's best for our kids. We're going to still need parent volunteers, we're going to send home things. When we have conferences, our teachers are going to have conferences, we have a, a door that goes directly from outside into a conference room. And so it's going to be very safe, but you're still going to be able to have some of those in-person conferences. But as far as our proper part of our school where our students are, it's just going to be very, very, very protected as it always has been, even without COVID, very protective of our kids here at the elementary schools. And you know, we're going to need substitutes. So if you want to get in the building, get on our substitute list and you can come on in. So that's how we're going to handle that here at Emma.
That's a great point. And, and thank you for sharing. And again, we want, we want families to come into the building. Again, we've always wanted that, but, but certainly we need to do it safely and we need to do it in compliance with, with the state guidelines. And so appreciate all of our principals thinking outside the box. Something that has come up, we have a lot of parents that want... up, we have a lot of parents that want to come in the building, but we also have a lot of parents that are really concerned at what's going to be happening in our buildings as it relates to, how often are we going to be cleaning? How often are we going to be disinfecting? What about hand washing for our kids, hand sanitizing? What is all that going to look like? Gency Ross is the principal at Bronner Intermediates, and I'm going to let her tackle that question for us.
Okay, thank you for everyone for joining. And that's a big concern that everyone has about just the safety and the, the clean, the cleanliness of our campuses. And so as many of you know, we partner with SSC, and they're our cleaning company that assists every campus here in GISD. And they've been diligent ever since our schools closed in March. They were here cleaning, especially, I know, seeing at our campus, even, you know, down on the floor, cleaning the baseboards and things like that. But we know that they can't do it alone. And so our teachers are going to be equipped with cleaning products like Lysol spray and Clorox wipes, and even the, the backpack foggers, if you think like Ghostbusters, we will have one of those on our campus as well. So we're going to be doing our part as staff members too, to keep our kids safe and COVID-free. The district is going to provide us with that PPE, that personal protective equipment. So face masks, but like Mr. Holmgren said, we won't have an unlimited supply, but we will have those disposable face masks. Our front office personnel will have shields in the front. And some of us have even put six-foot tables in front of our receptionist area to keep those people just germ-free. And then in the classroom, a lot of us do a small group instruction. And so there will be dividers and the classrooms on those small group tables. So we're taking all those precautions. Now, as far as hand washing, we are going to take time at the beginning of the year, where normally we would be jumping into instruction. We're going to be taking time talking about what does social distancing look like? What does six feet look like? And then how do you wash your hands? I mean, kids learn about that early on, but even as adults, you know, you're thinking 20 seconds washing your hands, that, that's kind of a long time. So our staff is going to provide videos on how to properly wash your hands. And then we're going to be practicing. We're going to be taking class restroom breaks to make sure the teachers can supervise their kiddos as they're washing their hands at the elementary level. There's going to be an abundance of hand sanitizer in the entry and exit points. And so like at the elementary level, when kids are going outside to the playground, they'll take a couple of pumps of hand sanitizer. When they're coming back in, same thing. They'll still be going to the restroom area and washing their hands right when they come in the building. Whether they ride the bus or get dropped off, they will have hand sanitizer as well available for them. And that kind of leads into school supplies. Operation School Supplies is providing supplies for all of our kids. So they will, at elementary, sometimes we do a lot of sharing. And so they're going to have their own products that they can use that will just be there, so they don't have to share with anyone. We're also going to have the cafeteria sprayed down between lunches. And if you, you know, we all serve so many kids at lunchtime, and they're all going to be in there at the same time, at least on our campus. And so we are going to take 10 minutes in between lunches and spray down those areas. And so that's what we are doing here at Bronner to keep our kids safe and healthy and COVID-free.
Yeah, that's great. I think it's probably shared sentiments throughout the district. I have one other question while I have you, Gency. Talk to, talk to me a little bit about what is parent pickup and drop-off going to look like there at Bronner?
All right. Well, in the morning at Bronner, we have two points of entry, just the front doors where the kids get off the buses, and then in our side parking lot where our parents who drop their kids off. So that's where they come in the building. They'll have hand sanitizer right there regardless of where they come in. Those two areas are always supervised by adults here at Bronner, as they are at every school. And then something new for actually most of the elementaries, we're not going to be having our morning assemblies this year, unfortunately. And I know that we love, as administrators, we love doing that. We love celebrating our, our kids, our teachers. We invite parents to come in. That's going to look different for a little while, hopefully not forever. But when our kids come in, and they're, they're going to be going straight to the classroom. And that 7:10 to 7:30 time will just be used for any kind of remediation. The teachers are extremely creative with what's going to be happening during that, that time of instruction. But it's going to be very calm. It's going to be a good way to start the day. And if their kids need breakfast, they'll go to the cafeteria and socially distance in there. As far as pickup, we've got the kids who go to the bus will be waterfalled. And so they will leave class by class. So we won't have an abundance of kids in the hallway at the same time. The teachers will walk them to the bus. Same thing, walking the kids who go to parent pickup. And luckily at Bronner, we have two gyms. And so we'll spread our kids out in both gyms, and they will be called to go to their vehicle whenever their parents show up.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Ross. At, at this point, I want to talk to Carla Wilmeth, who is the principal at Acton Elementary School. Ms. Wilmeth, I've had a, a lot of questions as it relates to, to class size. What, what, what is a typical classroom going to look like? How are we going to social distance in our classrooms?
Okay. Thank you guys for joining us. We can't wait for the students that, whose families feel comfortable for them to be back on campus. We can't wait to see all of those sweet faces. Class sizes, we are going to try to keep those as small as possible. Right now, it's hard to tell because depending on enrollment and which families choose face-to-face and which families choose virtual. But we are going to try to keep those as small as possible. Social distancing is going to, I can't remember who said it earlier, but we're going to be teaching kids about social distancing, what that looks like. And in our classrooms, the desks are going to, we're going to try to keep those approximately six feet apart where feasible. But we have different class sizes all over the district. Even at AES, we have probably four or five different classroom sizes. So it's going to look differently on our campus. It's going to look different at other campuses. But the teachers are working so hard. They've already, a lot of our teachers have already been up here thinking ways to keep kids socially distanced while still making it as normal as possible. And for us to have fun and learn, you're going to be seeing, like many have said, lots of hand washing, lots of hand sanitizer. We're going to teach the kids about, you know, cleaning their areas, you know, before they leave and things like that. So it's going to look different at each campus, but we are working hard, doing our best to make sure that all our students are safe.
Awesome. Just kind of a follow-up question, Ms. Wilmeth. You, you make, you make every effort to make a parent feel safe, but at the end of the day, you know, a parent just has a lot of concerns about in-person instruction and decides to opt out. Can they opt out at any time for virtual instruction?
Yes. If they start off face-to-face, at any time that they would like to go to virtual, that's a, that's an option. And then they would stay virtual until they felt comfortable coming back. And that would be like at the end of grading periods where they can come back. But they could go to virtual at any time.
Awesome. And, and one, one last question for you. Siblings. So let's say that I have two kids. They're both fourth graders. Is it, is it possible to, to make a consideration to allow them both to be in the same class?
If they're in the same grade, and you would like your students in the same class, you can contact your campus administrator and, you know, ask that. And we can make that happen if that's something that the family would like to see. Yep.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you very much. I want to shift to, to junior high real quick. Ms. Pennington, who is the campus principal at AMS, would you talk to us at the junior high level? We talked a lot of elementary. What, what about passing periods at the junior high level? How are we going to social distance at the junior high level? I'm getting questions, backpacks? Can kids have backpacks at the junior high level?
Absolutely. And so we'll have students in masks during the passing period. So that's going to be something that we want students to continue to wear, not only in the classroom, but also as they're moving throughout the day. We always have adult supervision in the hallways, but we will have increased supervision in the hallways to make sure that students aren't just hanging out together. But we're getting them moved on to where they need to go. We're going to practice getting our kids ready to drive. We're going to have them staying to the right side of the hallway as they're going down the hallway, and then on the right side as they're coming out of the hallway. So we're going to have safe, healthy driver practicing time. We are also going to have students going immediately into their classrooms. So at AMS, normally, students would wait outside until their teachers brought them in. But we'll have teachers bringing them into the classrooms right away. As they're coming into the classroom, we will have hand sanitizer available for them to get that squirt to come in and squirt to go out. That way, we're always thinking about what that looks like in terms of making sure that we're keeping ourselves safe and, and clean. There's going to be signs in the hallway as well, reminding students, you know, socially distanced where you can. Make sure that you're not hanging on each other. Make sure you're not touching each other, you know? We just need to go from point A to point B and get there in a safe manner. Backpacks are absolutely allowed. We want students to have that option available to them. And we do have a backpack drive going on. So if students need access to a backpack, our backpack drive information will be coming out shortly too.
All right. Thank you. No hanging on each other should always be a rule at the junior high.
Absolutely.
Ms., Mrs. Clark, over at GMS, we, we're also, we have parents that are concerned specifically about bathrooms. And so, you know, if we only allow kids to go to the bathroom in between classes, obviously, they, they gang up in there. It's, if you don't have social distancing. So what'll that look like? Also, if you don't mind talking about, can kids bring water bottles or the water fountain's going to, going to be available? School supplies at the junior high level? What, what is all that going to look like?
Absolutely. So just like the AMS principal, Ms. Pennington, was saying, we are going to have, you know, increased hallway monitoring and just go straight to where you're going. So straight to where you're going means don't go to the bathroom during passing periods. It's just actually opposite of what we normally do. But that way, when they're in the classroom and we can, we can kind of control those numbers just by letting one person per class go at a time. And so they'll be, teachers are very aware that they're going to need to let the, the students go to the restroom during class time. And that way, we have a very limited number in there. As far as water fountains, we're not going to directly drink out of the water fountain. Some campuses have water bottle fill stations. So we are encouraging everyone to bring water bottles or their, their refillable bottles. But for those of us who don't have them yet, we're working very hard to get them as soon as we can so that they can fill them up at, at those stations. But there's also a water fill station at lunchtime. So moving on to school supplies, we spoke about it earlier, but the district and Operation School Supplies are going to work together to make sure that everyone has all of their school supplies, which is amazing. Some parents have asked if they can provide their own. Absolutely. And that just means that we're ready for more kids in need of, of having some more supplies. So that's fabulous. And if you want to help out, you can make a donation to Operation School Supplies. So...
Good. Thank, thank you, Ms. Clark. And I'll, I'll tell you this, it's probably a good time to say that there's a lot of common themes running through the answers. And that's because across the board, all of our principals are on the same page. So when you hear Ms. Clark say, we're, we're not going to have the water fountains operational, but we'll have bottle fillers and kids can bring their own water bottle. Again, please know that applies to every campus in, in the ISD. And so one follow-up question, Ms. Clark, while I have you on the line. Sixth grade orientation has come up. How are we going to do that this year since it won't be in person?
There we go. I'm unmuted. So we have been working very hard. Ms. Pennington, myself, and then our technology department, we're engaging our sixth-grade campus and our campus leadership team to do a virtual tour, so that they get to know who their teachers will be. And, and so that will be available online as soon as we get it all put together. But we've been working on a, a virtual pirate camp, if you will, for our sixth graders so that they know what to expect when they come to the middle schools.
Thank you. And let's jump up to the high school, Jeremy Ross. If you don't mind, talk to us, if we're talking orientations, obviously, ninth grade orientation is a big deal. And then I've gotten several questions as it relates to what's going to happen to, to our fine arts, cheer, dance, band, also big events. Question that came in a couple of hours ago, are we going to be able to have pep rallies, assemblies? What's all that going to look like?
So for, for our fine arts classes, as you can imagine, those are going to be difficult. But they're going to be, they're going to be offered for, or earning course credit by completing general assignments as required by teacher. And that's for a virtual kid who may not be, who may not be comfortable with coming to school, and, and more comfortable learning in a virtual environment. But we're going to have opportunities for performances as a team, for the, the cheerleaders and for the dance team, you know, and for, and for band. But those may require you to come to practice. And so they may have a rehearsal, they may have to learn choreography, and those performance decisions are going to be determined by the coach or the director. Specifically about band, we've had a lot of questions about band. Their, their activities are recommended to be, to be held outside. But I also know that the directors at both the high school and both middle schools are working hard to build a series of safe protocols for inside, including gridding their spaces for six feet and 10 feet intervals and, and other things to do so that they can, they can perform inside if we get the, the okay to do so. Choir is going to utilize their, their classrooms, their outside spaces, and the auditorium to spread out. And also, you know, they're going to probably be doing some singing with masks on too, just to keep everybody safe. You, you ask about pep rallies, and that's been a hot topic around here lately. Everybody is very, very concerned about, oh my gosh, we're not going to have pep rallies. And so, no, we've not said that completely. But right now, our guidance says that campuses are prohibited from having large attendance events such as all-school assemblies, parties, socia ls, and pep rallies that bring students together until further notice. And I keep telling everybody to hang on to that phrase that says, until further notice. You know, we, we've got until almost the end of September to figure out a creative way to do pep rally, whether that's, that's if we get the okay to move it outside, or to have it virtually, or have it done in, 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 in a different way. But I can tell you that if we end up with the all-clear to go full steam ahead with football season, I find it very hard to believe that we will not have a pep rally to cheer on the Pirates. And so calm down, take a breath, and we will see what we can do as the time gets closer to that. We're going to plan for them. We're just going to have to wait and see for some of that.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Let's shift gears a little bit to, and talk about virtual instruction, because I know some of our families are going to opt into virtual instruction rather than be on campus. Our curriculum department, led by Curriculum Director Sharon Williams, has been putting together our instruction, our virtual instruction plan. Ms. Williams, the questions I'm getting as it relates to virtual instruction, what, what will a typical day look like, a typical schedule? What are going to be the attendance requirements for virtual instruction? And what are the instructional platforms that the district plans to use?
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and thanks for joining us. We really appreciate you being a partner with us in, in this strange situation that we're, we're still enduring. Virtual instruction will look a couple of different ways depending on your child. If, if you have a device or a district device, and they'll talk about that, I'm sure, a little bit later, and, and data, then it will be mostly online. If not, if you don't have access, you know, we certainly will be supporting kiddos with some paper packets, some activities, those kinds of things. A schedule, just depending on the family, what we have written out in the plan is a recommended number of minutes by content. So if that happens to be when you get home from work at 6 o'clock, then that's when it happens. If it, if their child can do some of it during the day when you're not there, then that's when it happens. So it's very flexible, and, and we, we need to be that way for our kiddos. It's a trying time, and we want to take as much pressure, you know, off of you and for you to be our partner in that, to give us feedback so we can help further with the kiddos' learning. Attendance requirements, we're, we are required by the state to make some sort of contact on a daily basis to encourage, to ensure that students are engaged in learning and that they're making progress in assignments and things that they're working on. So it, it could be that it's a login. It could be, you know, somebody's calling. It could be a variety of different things, an email, something like that. So we know that kids are engaged and they're, they're, they're moving along. And the platforms that we'll use this year, our technology department has worked closely with us on pre-K through second grade, we'll use a, a platform called CSO. And third grade through 12th grade through senior level... And third grade through 12th grade through senior level, we'll use Google Classroom. So that no more will you see different venues in that. Those are the two platforms that Granbury ISD will be using.
Where will parents be able to get more information about virtual learning?
Yes, we were, we're about to roll some information out for you. Our plan needs to go to the board, we'll do that on Monday, we'll submit it to the state. And certainly, we'll all along be giving you bits of information. Your campuses can answer some questions, I'm happy to take any kind of emails or phone calls if we need to help you further with that.
And when should parents make a decision on virtual learning or in-person?
We are, tomorrow starts our registration. So there's, beginning tomorrow through August 5th, if we could get some information from you all, it's very difficult to turn things around to make sure that, you know, all of our kids have a great opportunity to learn this year. So tomorrow, the 29th through August 5th, if we could get that information from you. And if not, you know, we'll be contacting just to make sure that we have kids ready to go.
And one other question I had, immunizations, if you're going virtual, do they still apply?
They do, yes. We just had clearance from the state on that, the Department of Health on that.
Perfect, thank you.
So you have your immunizations, yes.
Thank you. We have an interim technology director here in Granbury ISD, that's Danielle Parsons. Ms. Parsons, so if we go virtual, we're gonna have to distribute Chromebooks. Can you talk about what that distribution will look like? Families that have more than one kid, will they be able to get more than one Chromebook? Also, student logons, emails, passwords, what if they don't have reliable internet at home? Lots of questions and concerns about technology.
Absolutely, Dr. Glenn, excuse me. Yes, like Ms. Williams was just saying, we'll need some time to kind of decide what platform all of our learners are going to be on and all of our students are going to be on. So device checkout will be available to GISD students, but that may not happen until after the first day of school, after that August 12 start date, so that we can make sure that we have devices available for our students that choose to come face-to-face and for our students that are going to be virtual learners. But we will offer devices, once we kind of have a better idea, that checkout will, it'll go through an application process so we can make sure that you get the correct device for your learner, and it'll go through your home campus still. So you'll still check out through your home campus, you'll apply with your home campus so we can make sure you have what you need. In the beginning, we're going to say two devices per family, and then as we have a better idea of our numbers, then we will change that or update that as we go forward. Logins will be given to our students, all students that first week of school. So if you're starting out virtually as a virtual learner, your virtual classroom teacher will contact you and give you your login information at that time. If you are a face-to-face learner, it's still important that you have that login information at home and have access to that. So all of our teachers, all of our staff, pre-K through 12th grade, will make sure that our kiddos have access to their login information, and there's something that can go home, be backpacked home that first couple of days that you could put on your refrigerator so that if your kiddo chooses to switch over to virtual or that there's another situation where you need to access one of our instructional platforms, you have that at home. All GISD students will have access to their email. One of the things we do to help protect our kiddos, though, is make sure that that email on fifth grade and under is protected to within Granbury ISD. The instructional platforms that we chose, CSO and Google Classroom, have exceptional parent contact filters. So once our kiddos are older than fifth grade, when they enter that sixth grade year, they learn how to use email, they learn how to, you know, compose an email and do those things. Fifth grade and under will have email to reach out to their teachers, but that communication piece will be really put back on parents and on families and give them that kind of joint ownership in that conversation. For some of our families that don't have Wi-Fi at home, we are working on some different grants for some different monies that are available to school districts. We just haven't procured those yet. And once we do, once we, if we get more information on that, we will absolutely share that out with our families and reach out to our community and let them know what's available to them at that time.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Parsons, we appreciate that. Jeff Metter, I know we've had some questions as it relates to school supplies. We're buying school supplies. Our board has taken action to make sure every kid will have school supplies on the first day of school. What about the virtual kids, will they have access to them?
Yes, absolutely, the virtual kids will have school supplies, and we'll be able to distribute those just in the same way that we're gonna be distributing Chromebooks and be able to get those out to families with Operation School Supplies. Normally, we'd be having a big distribution of Resource Fair tomorrow, in fact, but that event has been canceled. And so, all the school supplies will be going directly to the campuses, and they'll be prepackaged by grade level and ready for the students that are in-person. They'll be in their classroom when they, when they show up on the first day of school and also ready for pickup by virtual learners. And the campuses will be scheduling that distribution. Of course, we are still in great need of backpacks for children. So if you'd like to donate one or a group of backpacks, then you can drop those off here at the administration building at 217 North Jones Street. If you'd like to make a donation to help defray the district's cost in purchasing all these school supplies, you can go to www.granburyisd.org/oss and make a secure online donation through PayPal.
Awesome, thank you, Jeff. I'm getting questions as it relates to athletics. If kids go virtual, can they participate in extracurricular activities? We have our athletic director Dwight Butler on the call to answer that question.
Yes, hello, everybody, glad to see all of you this evening. And yes, we are going to allow all virtual, all students enrolled. GISD will have the opportunity to be a part of the athletic program, and we're excited about that.
So tell me, this is the question everybody's asking, fall sports, what's that gonna look like?
We're on track to start all of our games and activities in September. We will first start off with volleyball. And football will start up next Monday with their two-hour sports specific programs. And then everyone else will join in, all of our other programs will start the first day of school, August the 12th. And then we will start activities and games in September. Football will be the end of September, and of course volleyball will be a little earlier, 10 days earlier.
Are physicals needed this year?
No, only unless you are a seventh grader coming in and someone new to our district is the only ones that will need it, or new to our program will need. If you had one with us last year, that one will suffice also.
All right, thank you, Coach. One last question, because I know you oversee this. We did have one question about driver's education, is that gonna resume?
We're in the virtual stage right now, they can come and sign up to do the virtual, but we will start in-person instruction once school begins again.
Thank you. Also, as it relates to virtual instruction, we've had questions for kids that are taking CTE classes, ag, auto tech, health science, culinary, what might that look like? Our Director of Career and Technology Education is Jimmy Dawson. Jimmy, if I'm going virtual, what's it gonna look like for me as I take classes that are more hands-on?
Well, thank you all, and thank you all for joining us tonight. So our Granbury High School CT teachers are excited to provide the best experience possible, regardless of the instructional platform they choose, face-to-face or at-home virtual learning. So our goal as a CT department is to continue to offer all courses to students in an effort to allow them to continue down their pathway of choice. So students who are attending CTE courses virtually will use Google Classroom to connect with their teachers with all assignments, instructions, videos, projects, and more. So students will check in daily with their Google Classroom to access the information from their teachers, and that will serve as their attendance once they fulfill the daily requirements within that Google Classroom. But due to the nature of those upper-level courses within the Career and Technical Education Department, some assignments and/or projects may require students to come to campus to complete their work. So teachers, administrators, parents will work together within the specific courses to determine when and how those assignments will be completed. So this will require some flexibility for everyone to ensure that we're using the proper precautions from our local and state guidelines. The main thing to remember is that we're not going to limit students from taking the courses that they have chosen just because they're gonna go virtual. So it'll be the student's responsibility to check in with their instructor daily through Google Classroom in order to be counted present and to complete their daily assignments. And our teachers are very excited to get things rolling again, to get the school year started, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Virtual learning is certainly complex. Our bilingual coordinator is Mrs. Pat Yelverton. Are we gonna be able to offer bilingual education virtually?
Yes, sir, sorry, I was trying to unmute. Welcome, everybody, and thank you for being here. Can you hear me? Okay, yes, we will be able to offer bilingual and our dual language, and they will be taught by bilingually certified teachers.
Awesome, and as far as the information, some of our predominantly Spanish-speaking families, you're gonna have a forum coming up for them to get information in Spanish?
Yes, and we'll send out a link, I will do a Zoom tomorrow at 11:30. Mr. Metter's gonna send that out so they can participate and ask their questions in Spanish, and hopefully, we can answer them.
All right, thank you, Ms. Yelverton. We've got a lot of virtual questions, a couple of more to get to. Becky Strain, who is our GT coordinator, will our GT students be able to get served through virtual learning or online learning?
Well, yes, students receiving instructions virtually will have GT services provided to them. All the teachers who provide services have received 30 hours of specialty training. And so they're able to differentiate the curriculum for a gifted learner. Now, on elementary campuses, they likely will have someone specific assigned to teach GT students, and they will meet probably weekly virtually with all of those students. Middle and high school campuses will serve GT students remotely through honors, AP, and dual-credit courses. So reassured, GT students will be receiving services even remotely.
All right, great. Mr. Ross, any changes to AP or dual-credit as it relates to virtual instruction?
For virtual, AP and dual-credit courses are gonna require the same learning outcomes as regular in-person classes. Your assignments are essentially gonna be the same. Also, there may be some tests or projects or labs that you have to complete in-person, and we'll work with the teachers to make sure that those are scheduled at a time when we can do that, when everybody feels safe and comfortable to do that. But those, those requirements may still be there. You will have daily requirements of checking in with your teacher, viewing their video or instruction, or participating in an online discussion so that you're counted present every day. So that's, that's gonna be a change from what you experienced last spring.
Awesome, thank you for clarifying that. Jumping to special education, Stacy Brown, who is the principal at Mambrino Elementary. I know you have a large special ed population out there. For both students that are virtual and also in-person accommodations, are they gonna be met? Are IEPs, are we gonna be following the students' IEPs? What about special services like speech therapy, occupational therapy? Will special ed kids have to wear a mask? I mean, how is that gonna work?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Glenn, good evening, Granbury. All accommodations and IEP goals that are put in place by students' art or 504 committee will continue to be provided during either virtual or face-to-face instruction. And all related services such as speech and occupational therapy, physical therapy, et cetera, those will all be offered virtually as well, much kind of like how we've done this last week during ESY or extended school year because we took the last week virtually. Parents and guardians also do have the option to transport their students to the campus for related services as well. So if we have a parent that is interested in bringing their son or daughter in for their speech services for face-to-face, but maintain the rest of their instruction virtually, they can do that as well. And then as it relates to masks, I know Mr. Homegreen talked a little bit about it, that, you know, students that are unable to wear a mask for health reasons are gonna make sure that they contact their student's campus and make sure that they have a note from their child's pediatrician. And so, you know, as far as that goes, us at Mambrino, you know, just like my brilliant colleagues have kind of said before, we continue to be working hard to make sure that we follow the guidelines and create the most normal possible experience for our students.
Yeah, and y'all are doing a truly amazing job, and we appreciate all the leaders on this call. A few more questions to get to. Child nutrition continues to be a big issue. And again, I wanna tell Amy Parker did a phenomenal job of standing up home delivery as we went virtual in the spring. But the questions I'm getting this year, and I know Amy's on the call with us. Amy, as far as kids bringing their lunch to school, will kids be able to pack a lunch and bring it to school, or they have to eat in the cafeteria? You wanna clarify that?
I think we're having some technical difficulty with Ms. Yelverton.
All right, I'll clarify it for her, because there were several questions about it. Parents, just know this, that you can absolutely pack a lunch and bring your child's lunch to school. What we're trying to do is limit bringing, going and picking up maybe Chick-fil-A and bringing it into the high school, that's what we're doing away with. However, if you wanna check your kid out of school and take them to lunch, you can certainly do that. But the parents that pack their child's lunch 90% of the time, please continue to do that. And certainly, we're gonna discourage as much as possible any sharing of food on the campuses. Also, as it relates to our cafeteria protocols, know that we have really strict guidelines. We're following not only guidance from the Texas Department of Agriculture and also our state guidance, but also local guidance from local health officials to make sure that everything we do behind the scenes as it relates to food prep is clean and it's sanitary. And so, as kids go into the cafeteria, certainly, we're gonna try and maintain social distancing as much as possible, again, because we want to keep kids in school. We know that kids are social, they wanna play. We're gonna give them plenty of that recess time outside so they can play and interact as kids. What we don't want, and because the state guidance is so strict on this, we wanna minimize having to send a large group of kids home because one kid is exposed. And so there will be some social distancing in the cafeterias. Some of our kids are gonna eat breakfast in the classroom, kind of a grab-and-go breakfast. Some will have the opportunity to eat in the cafeteria because some of our campuses have larger cafeterias. But appreciate Amy Parker and all that she and her staff do to prep our meals and keep our kids safe. So with that, I wanna jump to transportation, because that's another big issue. Ryan Cruthers is our Director of Transportation. What's it gonna look like on a school bus this year?
School bus, we're gonna do our best to keep the kiddos safe as well as staff. But one of the things that we've gotta keep in mind is you can't socially distance on a school bus. There's just too many people. One of the things we're doing, we're encouraging all parents that can to go ahead and take their kiddos to school, pick them up. For those of you that can't, all students onboard need to have a mask while they're on the bus. When they board the bus, they will have, they will have a squirt of hand sanitizer to clean up. We'll be boarding the bus, and as we board the bus, we'll load it back to front to eliminate passing as much as possible. And then unloading the same way as best we can from front to back. We'll keep the windows open and get the air ventilating as much as we can when weather permits. And finally, in between bus runs, the drivers will be sanitizing the buses to make sure they're clean for the next run and for the next batch of kids coming in.
Awesome, thank you, Mr. Cruthers. And again, I'll reiterate that, any parent that has the ability to drop off and pick up their own kid, I know it can be a little inconvenient, but that would be a huge help to us as we work hard to reopen schools safely. So speaking about reopening schools, I wanna jump to our principal at Oakwoods Elementary, Mr. Cody. Mr. Cody, how do kids get their schedule, know who their teacher's gonna be? What's the first day of school gonna look like? What can our parents expect? Meet-the-teacher nights, we've gotten several questions. Are we gonna have meet-the-teacher nights? Are we gonna have parent meetings like we typically do, or evening gatherings or events?
Thank you, Dr. Glenn, good questions. First of all, contacting students, sometime around August the 10th or 11th, it could be before that. But around that time, the classroom teacher is going to be contacting all the parents and the students in their class, and they're gonna be asking a couple of questions. Number one, they're gonna be double-checking to make sure that we have it right, whether you wanna be in virtual instruction or if you're coming to school. So we can double-check that. And then also, they're going to be asking for elementary campuses, the very- the very most important question for the beginning of the school is, how are you gonna get home at the end of the day? So that's a big thing we do on Meet the Teacher Night, is we work out transportation issues with, with the families. So somewhere around August the 10th, it could be the 11th, it might be a little bit before, you'll be getting a call from your classroom teacher, and that's the way you'll be contacted. Also, when we flip the switch, if you're on family, Skyward Family Access, obviously you will be able to see who your teacher is on, on that. We don't know exactly what day that will, will turn on yet. And the reason for a lot of this is because we're waiting for those numbers on, on July 29th to know who's coming and who's not coming, and we have to level classes. So we wanna make sure when we tell you who your teacher is, that's really who your teacher's gonna be, and we don't have to, to change that. And then the third thing is, we wanna remember if your kid comes in the, the first day and we, we have already been, told you tonight that adults aren't gonna be allowed in the building. If your, if your kid forgets who the teacher is, then always, just like we do on the first day of school, we'll have lots of folks in the building with class lists. And if your kid does not know who the teacher is or where the room is, we will escort them to the proper place, so they won't just be wandering the buildings, wondering where they need to be. Open House, that's, that's gonna be different this year. That's a big, big event in Granberry. It's a reunion. Students reconnect, families reconnect after a summer. We can't do that this year. So first grade through 5th graders are going to be doing a virtual open house, Meet the Teacher at every campus, and those teachers, and we use social media and other means to get out the details about when those virtual meetings will take place. Kindergarten students, what most of our campuses are planning, and you'll get specific instructions on, on that, on this item, is we're probably going to, it'll look a little bit different on every campus, but we will have meeting points outside the building on the first day of school, where I know at my campus, we're gonna have little tents set up, like you see at Ballfields, and the kindergarten teachers will all have a tent, and the kindergarten parents and those students will gather under those tents. That teacher will be there to, to meet and greet and take that first day picture with the teacher. We want that to happen, all those special memories. And then from that meet and greet area, those kids will be escorted into the building by their, their classroom teacher. Also, we have the option to have rolling start times on the first day of school, and our elementary campuses are choosing to bring our pre-K and kindergarten kids in just a little bit later. School starts this year at 7:25, and the doors open at 7:10. But what we're gonna be doing is asking kindergartners and precares and those parents to bring their kids a little bit later. We'll get out the times to you, it'll be probably around 8:00 to 8:15. We'll get that information to you, and we're gonna ask you to come just a little bit later, so we can have these meeting points after the crowd has left, after we've got everybody in the building. We'll have a little bit later start time for those younger kids, so we can really give them some special attention and meet that teacher and get them to the right spot.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. What about the grading policy this year?
We've changed that just a little bit this year. This year, second grade through 5th grade will be having our number grades. You'll get a grade in ELA, math, science, and social studies. You'll get approximately 10 grades in ELA in math each six weeks, and six to eight grades in science and social studies. That's daily work and test, and you'll have your average grade for the six weeks and get that grade. As for 2nd through 5th grade, kindergarten, pre-K kindergarten and first grade will continue on our standards-based report cards. So at the end of each six weeks, you'll kinda get what's considered a progress report, whether you're making progress, you've mastered a concept, or you still need a little bit more work. So that's our grading, what we'll do on the elementary campuses. And of course, there's a little more detail in that, and, and that's found in board policy. We'll be following those grading policies that are set forth by our, our school board.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cody, and that'll apply. So our, our traditional grading policy will be in effect for virtual learners and, and again, for our in-person learners. So all of that will return to normal, and appreciate you clarifying the, the younger grades. Two more quick miscellaneous questions. The first is dyslexia. Are we gonna be able to offer our dyslexia services for in-person and virtual? I'll have our dyslexia coordinator, Wendy Gandy, answer that question.
Thank you, Dr. Glenn. Hello, everybody. And yes, we will continue to support our students with the MTA Dyslexia Class via Zoom, just like we did in the spring. And there's also gonna be other websites still available, like Learning Ally, which is the online audiobooks that are still available. There's also activities on the GISD website for any parent to, to look at, and that's under the Dyslexia tab. But we will continue to offer the MTA class for those students that are in that or the students that have recently been diagnosed and identified as a student with dyslexia. They have the ability to join the team, join the MTA class, whether it's in-person or virtual.
Awesome. And I was actually wrong. I have, now I have two more questions. I missed one. Our extended day program, are we gonna offer extended day this year? And we have our extended day and daycare coordinator, Tiffany Rodriguez, here to help us.
Yes, the Extended School Day Program will be open this year, as long as we are meeting face to face. The Extended School Day Program will be open, and we will follow all protocol that Granberry ISD is following and continue that in our program after school.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you, guys. Last question, and I have our lead counselor at Granberry High School, Claudia Hurst, on the line to answer this. This is, this, this is a stressful time for a lot of people. This is very atypical for a school leadership team to get together and answer these type of questions in this type of forum before school begins. So obviously, there's, there's some stress. Will counselors be available at every campus for students who, who may need to talk to somebody, to talk to somebody that's dealing with some anxiety as it relates to the pandemic and in-person instruction? You may have to unmute.
Glenn, yes, counselors will be available at every campus. We'll be there for your children and also those virtual learners. You can contact the campus, and that counselor can set up a time to visit with your child via the phone or Zoom. We want you to know that we're here to support your kids and to support you as a family. These are stressful times, and kids are walking through the door with a lot of unknowns. But please know that we are here to support them, and we will encourage them and help them make those steps that they need to make.
Awesome. I think that covers pretty much all of the questions we have. If for some reason we didn't get to your question, again, you can go to coronavirus@granberryisd.org, and we'll get you the answers quickly as possible. And certainly, always feel free to call us at the District Administration Building or come up and visit with your campus principals. They'll answer your question. At this time, I'd like to take just a second. We have several trustees on the line, and I've asked the Vice President of our school board, Ms. Barbara Townsend, if she'd like to make a couple of closing comments on behalf of the board.
Hi. First off, thank you so much, everyone, for being here, for the town hall meeting. Understand that your children, we know they're precious to you, but they're also very precious to us. And we take our responsibility very seriously. Know that we have worked very hard to figure out exactly what we can do, which is best for the students, best for the teachers, and best for our community. But as we go forward, as Dr. Glenn said, this is a very fluid situation. If as we go forward, we change things, we make things better, understand that we're working with the best information we have at every time, every moment. So we ask you for your patience, and we ask you for your prayers, and this is gonna be a good year for GISD. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. And again, it is a fluid situation. There are a lot of moving parts. As we, as we can maybe move away from some of these more stringent protocols and procedures, we will, but certainly we wanna do it safely for our students and in our staff. And so I do wanna thank all the administrators on the call. We have an incredible leadership team at Granberry ISD, and certainly our principals are well-prepared. You can know that your children are in good hands when you send them to our campuses. And so we are just blessed to be a part of an incredibly supportive community. I wanna thank everybody who took the time to be on the call tonight. Wanted to thank everybody who took the time to email us a question. And again, we're here to continue to answer these questions and help you and your family make the right choice for, for your child, whether it's in-person or whether it's virtual. Again, we wanna support and encourage you to continue to be part of Granberry ISD. We're, we're all proud pirates. Thank you for being on the call tonight. God bless all of you for your efforts. We know that you are carrying an incredible load, and we are so thankful for all that you do. Again, appreciate everyone who joined us tonight, and especially thankful to our district leadership team for helping clarify some of these questions. So with that, we'll close out this town hall. God bless and Godspeed.